Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. The Clayton County Board of Commissioners meeting is now called to order. The date is May 6, 2025, and the time is 6 o'clock PM. At this time, I will do roll call. District 1.
Here.
District 3.
Present.
District 2.
Here.
And District 4.
Present.
Thank you. Item 3, our invocation, and will be done today by Chaplain Jay Smith, with Change Church in Duluth, Georgia. Would you please stand? And after that, we will do the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me. Let's go before God in a word of prayer. Oh, Father, we come into your presence, Lord God, lifting up our hands without wrath or doubt. Father, in the name of Jesus, we stand before you, lifting up and standing in the praxi for first the state of Georgia. Your word says that we should pray for those who are in authority over us. So we pray first for our President, our Vice President, our government, our Governor, our Mayor, and all elected and appointed officials. Father, we lift up our communities, our neighborhoods, Clayton County as a whole, and we decree and declare safety and protection over it. We decree and declare that there is no shortage or lack in Clayton County. Oh, Father, we declare that Clayton County operates as one. We progress. We thrive. We operate in a county that we're proud of and that the community is proud of. We thank you for that, Father. Father, we lift up the plans and the development and the agenda of this county. We pray for everyone involved. Oh, God, I ask right now that you cover every Commissioner and their family. May they have a hedge of protection around them. No hurt, harm, danger, incident, or accident can come nigh their dwelling. I thank you right now, Father, they are covered through and by your blood. I thank you right now that you give them guidance and wisdom and understanding, and renew and refresh their love for what they do and why they do it, Lord, for your people. Oh, God, we give you honor. We give you glory, and we give you praise. This day, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen? Amen? Amen?
Next, we will have our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
All right. Next, we will have the adoption of our agenda. Mr. Reed, will you please come up for any additions to the agenda?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair. I've got two items to be added, or requested to be added, to the agenda. First is Resolution 2025-94, which is a resolution authorized in Clayton County to enter into a sublease agreement with the Clayton County Health District and Positive Impact Health Centers for the lease of space at 1117 Battle Creek Road. And also Resolution 2025-95, which is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia, to support Taste of Fort Valley State 2025, hosted by Commissioner Gail Hambrik, in partnership with the Southern Crescent Alumni Chapter of Fort Valley State University. The reason why both of these are being added, first for the sublease, is that according to one of our state representatives, that there is a potential jeopardy of funding for medical treatment at the health district, which Positive Impact can help provide some benefit in that regard. And the funding, we're not sure when it's going to happen, so for the quicker we have somebody in space, and when it stops, that there is no lapse in service. And the second, for the Taste of Fort Valley for 2025-95, is so because the event is scheduled to happen before the next Board of Commissioners meeting. So those are the two reasons and the two agenda items.
All right. At this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda with the two additional items, 2025-94 and 2025-95.
So move.
All right. I second that. All right. Is there any discussion at this time? All right. No discussion, Board members?
Oh, well, I have a few items that I want to move from the content of the agenda to the regular agenda.
Okay. That's the problem. What items are they?
I would like to move item number 19 and item number 22.
Courtney, do you have that, 19 and 22?
I'm clear.
Are there any, is there any other discussion at this time? Are you ready for the question? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? And the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda will be the Veteran of the Month. We're going to do presentations and proclamations. We will first have the Veteran of the Month, who is Corporal Damian Luton, U.S. Army. After that, we will have a proclamation where Clayton County honors the life and legacy of retired Sergeant Major Deacon Eddie Turner. Number three will be the proclamation from Clayton County, as we observe, May 2025 is Older Americans' Month. And number four will be a proclamation for Clayton County, as we celebrate, May 4 through the 10th, 2025 is National Tourism Week. All right. Board members, we can proceed and come down now. Thank you.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors the Veteran of the Month, Corporal Damian Luton, U.S. Army. Corporal Luton proudly served four years in the United States Army. His military career began in Germany, where he was assigned to the 2nd Battalion, 6th Infantry Regiment, as an automotive logistics clerk. During this time, he deployed to Kosovo in support of NATO-led peacekeeping operations. Following his service in Germany, Corporal Luton was stationed at Fort Bliss in El Paso, Texas, where he served as a warehouse supervisor with the 507th Maintenance Company. In 2003, he deployed to Iraq during both Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom. March 2003, while operating on a mission, Corporal Luton's unit was ambushed. The attack resulted in several soldiers being wounded, some taken as prisoners of war, and others made the ultimate sacrifice. Corporal Luton was wounded in action, sustaining a gunshot wound to the leg. For his bravery and sacrifice, he was awarded the Purple Heart. An honor he carries not only for himself, but in memory of the brave service members who stood beside him and never returned home. His time in uniform instilled in him the enduring values of resilience, unity, and sacrifice, principles that continue to guide and inspire him in all aspects of life. Ladies and gentlemen, please, a round of applause for our Veteran of the Month, Corporal Damian Luton, U.S. Army. Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors the life and legacy of retired Sergeant Major Eddie Turner. Whereas the Clayton County Board of Commissioners mourns the loss of retired Sergeant Major Eddie Turner, a decorated military veteran, devoted father and beloved figure, and the proud father of former Chairman of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, Mr. Jeffrey E. Turner. And whereas Sergeant Major Turner answered the call to serve our nation on September 1, 1950, and faithfully served in the United States Army for three decades until his retirement on September 1, 1980. And whereas Sergeant Major Turner demonstrated bravery and honor while serving in both the Korean and Vietnam Wars, and completed critical overseas assignments in Germany, in addition to numerous stateside postings, including Fort Jackson, Fort Bragg, Fort Gordon, Fort Rucker, Fort Benning, Fort Hood, Fort Riley, Fort Sill, and Fort McPherson. And whereas Sergeant Major Turner's service was recognized with numerous prestigious awards and commendations, including the National Defense Service Medal, Vietnam Service Medal, Army Commendation Medal, Presidential Unit Citation, Korea Service Medal, Drill Sergeant Identification Badge, Good Conduct Medal, Bronze Star Medal, and the Legion of Merit. And whereas Sergeant Major Turner was a man of great faith, humility, and character, who led by example and inspired all who knew him through his devotion to family, community, and country, with the impact of his life and legacy continuing through the generations he leaves behind and the lives he has touched. And whereas the Clayton County Board of Commissioners extends its deepest condolences to the Turner family during this time of profound loss, and joins in honoring the enduring legacy of a true patriot and community pillar. Now therefore, I, Demont Davis, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, on this day, Tuesday, May 6, 2025, do hereby pay tribute to the remarkable life, service, and legacy of retired Sergeant Major Eddie Turner. May his life continue to be a source of inspiration, and may his memory be forever cherished in the hearts of those he served and loved. The Clayton County Board of Commissioners causes this resolution to be sent to the family as a mark of respect and in honor of the memory of Sergeant Major Eddie Turner. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 6th day of May in the year 2025.
Listen, on behalf of the Turner family, we definitely want to give thanks and gratitude to the Board of Commissioners for this recognition from my father, especially Commissioner Davis and Kirk, clerk rather, Ms. Russian, who definitely wanted to make this happen. And to all of you who have sent flowers, who have sent emails, who have texts, and whatever else that you've sent in condolences for my father's passing, we truly, truly appreciate you and love you very much. He was a resident of this county for 47 years, and he loved this county. So thank you for recognizing him and for all that you've done for my family. Thank you.
And also, we want to thank him, we want to thank you for what you've done for this county, in all the roles that you have served. And if it wouldn't have been for your dad, you know, you wouldn't have been made to do this. So we want to thank him, you know, and what you've done. So again, thank you and your entire family.
Whereas May is nationally recognized as Older Americans' Month, a time to honor the invaluable contributions, wisdom, and influence of older adults and communities across the country. And whereas Clayton County Senior Services proudly celebrates the vital role older residents play in shaping the culture, character, and history of Clayton County. And whereas each year, the Administration for Community Living Leads the nation in observing Older Americans' Month. And for May 2025, Clayton County Senior Services embraces the theme, Aging is a Breeze, promoting the idea that aging can be positive, graceful, and filled with opportunity. And whereas this theme encourages the community to uplift, support, and celebrate older adults, challenging outdated stereotypes and highlighting the importance of connection, joy, and healthy aging. Now therefore, I, Chairwoman Dr. Alika Anderson Henry, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby and proudly proclaim, May 2025, as Older Americans' Month in Clayton County, and encourage all residents to recognize, honor, and celebrate the older adults, the beloved seniors in our lives and community. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 5th day of May in the year 2025. Whereas the travel and tourism industry is a vital economic driver, supporting millions of jobs across the United States and generating billions in revenue for local, state, and national economies. And whereas National Travel and Tourism Week, observed May 4 through 10, 2025, celebrates the power of travel and its essential role in fostering economic growth, job creation, cultural exchange, and community development. And whereas Clayton County visitors spent $768.9 million in direct visitor spending last year, a remarkable 19% year-over-year increase. And whereas 6,519 jobs in Clayton County are directly supported by the tourism industry. And whereas Clayton County visitors generated $51.7 million in state and local taxes, the equivalent of $494 in tax savings per Clayton County household. And whereas Clayton County recognizes the importance of tourism marketing efforts, led by the Clayton County Convention and Visitors Bureau, in promoting our destination to visitors from across the nation and around the world, ensuring continued economic benefits and community enrichment. And whereas we honor the dedicated professionals in the travel hospitality and tourism industry, who worked tirelessly to provide exceptional experiences for visitors, contributing to the vibrancy and success of our community. Now therefore, I, Chairwoman Dr. Alika Anderson Henry, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim, May 4 through 10, 2025, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Clayton County, and encourages all residents, businesses, and organizations to recognize and support the contributions of the tourism industry in shaping our community and economy. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 6th day of May in the year 2025.
Next on our agenda, under Presentations and Proclamations, item 5, would be the presentation by the BOC, requested, the Sheriff's Audit by DCOO, Landry Murkison. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. As requested, I'm coming before you this evening to give you a brief update on where we were. There it is. So don't move it. Okay. I got it. On where we are with the audit that the board requested after the Tuesday, April 1 Board meeting. So as you will recall, during that board meeting, Budget Amendment 2-28 was passed, which allocated an additional $7 million to the Sheriff's Office for budget cleanup and some overruns. As a part of that audit, and as a result of the discussion amongst the board, there were three primary focus areas, which was overtime, identify any accounts controlled by the sheriff which are not budgeted through the general fund, and then identify the sources and amount of any income required by law to be turned over to the county. On Wednesday, April 2, Madam Chair sent an email to the board outlining those three topics of discussion, and then requested that I be the one that oversee and facilitate the audit as a part of a joint committee between Human Resources, Internal Audit, and the Department of Finance. I let that email sit for about a week to make sure there was no objections or other direction from the board. And on Tuesday, April 8, I sent an email to Sheriff Allen, his legal counsel, and copied the Board of Commissioners, outlining the email and kind of the scope of the audit as requested by the board, outlined the authority for the audit, which is found in OCGA 36-81-7, Subparagraph C.1, Subparagraph 1, among others, and requested several items of documents to be able to carry out the wish of the board. Not going to go through all of them individually, but just to kind of hit the highlights of them. Under Georgia Code 36-1-7, requires that sheriffs and other officers of the county make a return under oath to the grand jury, outlining revenue, the source of revenue, and expenditures, accompanied by a copy of the most recent financial statement or annual audit of the county. We asked for February of '25, November of '24, August of '24, May of '24, and February of '24. Item 2 were certain bank statements for calendar year 2024 and year-to-date 2025 on 10 various accounts that are in the name of the sheriff at Truist Bank. Item 3 was a complete roster of all Sheriff's Office personnel, whether civilian or sworn to include the following: employee number, name, and current assignment. Item 4 was the current attendance policy, governed overtime, and callback procedures. And finally, item 5, current time clocking and tracking policy and/or other procedures regarding those items. The following day, on Wednesday, April 9, I sent an additional email to Sheriff Allen and his legal counsel, copying the full board. With one additional request was two additional bank statements that we were brought aware of under the name of the sheriff at AmerisBank, and I provided those two account numbers. We started our audit process, the committee got together, and we started going through the overtime, pulling the overtime reports, and trying to do a reconciliation. At that point in time, we had not received any of the information from the sheriff. I did send a follow-up email on Thursday, May 1, just touching base with him, letting know that we were rapidly approaching the end of the budget process and wanted to get an update on the production of documents. And then on Sunday, May 4, I did get confirmation from the sheriff that he had received the information. So as we're still waiting to get the remaining of the financial information, so we can go through and complete the bulk of the task, we did run and start the process of going through the overtime report. Sheriff's budgeted 4.5 million in this current fiscal year for overtime. He's at about 6.6 million currently, and we estimate by the end of the fiscal year, that number will be somewhere between 7.8 and 7.9, approaching 8 million. We did run an overtime report from January 1 to May 6 of this year, just to try to start somewhere correlating who's generating the overtime, where's the overtime coming, and from what divisions within the jail. That report generated about 48,812 hours of overtime at a cost of right over 1.829 million. And that's where the committee sits right now. We're working through HR to go through and start to correlate and put together the who, the what, the when, the where, as it relates specifically to overtime. This is just the 1.5 time and a half overtime. This report has not dug into callback pay and other pay codes such as ad pay and some of the other ones. So right now, at the direction of the board, we're dealing straight with the 1.5-hour overtime pay code. And that's where the audit committee sits right now. We hope to get the bulk of the information by the next board meeting, so we can bring back another update. But with there, I will pause and ask if there's any questions.
Board members, are there any questions at this time? I'll start to my left, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Hambrecht.
Okay. How does this relate to the budget ending process? I mean...
So one of the things that...
When do we need, or do we need the information before, is it May, June 30 or May 30 or what?
So the budget has to be adopted before the beginning of the next fiscal year. I believe the conversation around the additional, if you remember, the request from the sheriff was for 14 million, I believe. The discussion amongst the board was, let's do half and do an audit, so we can kind of see where's the overtime coming from, where are some of these other things coming from. So, A, two things. One, we know how to set budget limits for next fiscal year. And then, two, what additional funds may be needed to clean up the rest of the fiscal year we're in now. So that's kind of how it relates to where the budget process is coming. So if there are other things that may come up that may be needed in next fiscal year, then we're looking for ways to be able to fund that through either shaving back on some of the overtime, and then being able to fund those without necessarily having to increase or reduce our fund balance. Yes, ma'am.
District 3?
No questions.
District 1?
Oh, I have two questions. Can you repeat that OCCGA statue that you cited?
Yes, ma'am. OCCGA 36-81-7, Subparagraph C.1, Subparagraph 1.
And I know that this is a subcommittee specifically for, or rather, a joint subcommittee for the audit of the Sheriff's Office. Are there any other Clayton County departments that are also receiving additional audits?
Not as directed by the board at this time, no, ma'am.
And then for the audits, you said that it is our, it's the Clayton County Internal Audit Department that's conducting this audit, like the auditors with auditing credentials? I'm not sure what that exact terminology is, but that is who is conducting this audit?
Internal Audit, Human Resources, the Department of Finance are the three county agencies involved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Board members, is there any other questions at this time? All right. Thank you, DCOO Murkison. Next will be public comments.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the board, with a total time of 30 minutes. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone. And speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
All right. First on the agenda will be, on the public comment will be Dr.
Henry Anderson, District 3, constituent and resident, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Good evening, Chairwoman, Mrs. Dr. Alika Anderson-Henry, Madam Vice Chair and District 1 Commissioner, Ms. Elena Reeves, District 3 Commissioner, Ms. Tashae Allen, District 2 Commissioner, Ms. Gail Hambrik, and District 4 Commissioner, Mr. Demont Davis. And continuing with my Clayton County Board of Commissioners, perform a appraisal, assessment, evaluation, standards, benchmarks, metrics, and criteria that I will be using in determining your overall evaluation report, court numerical grade rating score. I will now start your evaluation benchmarks, metrics, criteria, number nine, which is your competency, capabilities, abilities, skills, and talents as our Clayton County Board of Commissioners, and ensuring that our Executive Chief Operating and Operations Officer, our Executive Deputy Chief Operating and Operations Officer, and all of Clayton County Government, Departments, Divisions, Agencies, Authorities, and Clayton Citizens' Boards, Directors, Chief Managers, Supervisors, Chairpersons, and the front-line ranking staff, ranking file workforce are putting in the work that is required to make sure that all are doing their jobs and work competently, proficiently, efficiently, skillfully, in total and complete agreement, alignment, synergy, cooperation, partnership, collaboration, and teamwork with each other, and with the good and great citizens of Clayton County in making Clayton County a much better place to live, work, play, dine, relax, shop, explore, and enjoy, and ensuring Clayton County is continued upward rise, advancement, upward trajectory, ascension, and success. Evaluation benchmarks, metrics, and criteria, number 10, which is the use of your Clayton County Board of Commissioners, promethium, projection, visualization, jump... Projection Visualization Jumbo Screen in showing all of the analytical, statistical, operational, relevant, and pertinent information that is applicable to the requests that I make when issue, when I issue your Clayton, your Dr. Henry Anderson Clayton County Citizens Supreme Command Order directives on any problems, issues, or concerns that I bring before all five of you, our Clayton County Board of Commissioners to address and solve as all take the immediate action, execution, and implementation in solving the problems, issues, and concerns brought before you successfully for the good and great citizens of Clayton County. This concludes the presentation of my Clayton County Board of Commissioners' Performance Appraisal, Assessment, Evaluation, Standards, Benchmarks, Metrics, and Criteria, which number 10 in total, and given over the last five regular business meetings during the public commenting section that I will be using in determining your overall numerical grade rating score to all continue to have a very productive, great, engaging, orderly, excellent, exceptional, and outstanding risk of your Clayton County Board of Commissioners' regular business meeting on this evening, Tuesday, May 6, 2025. Good day.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next will be Mr. Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, District 3. Commissioner Hamburg, we have to stop greeting each other like that. People are going to think we like each other. Please stop the clerk from reading a code of conduct for public comments when there are members on this Board that are rude and disrespectful to each other. The April 15th Board of Commissioners meeting was embarrassing because there was a reporter from 11 Alive News here. The Chair has cut off a presentation from the Public Defender's Office who was asking for additional funding and cut off the Chair, Dr. Bratty, of the Development Authority during the last special called meeting. Last year, the county had a $99 million deficit. The Sheriff had requested an additional $33 million because he was underfunded. The Board of Commissioners spent $63 million not accounted for. If you're going to audit the Sheriff, why don't you conduct the forensic audit of this Board's spending and the Finance Department? We pay consultants that don't consult. We will have another mileage rate increase because of a deficit for this fiscal year. We have waste, fraud, abuse, greed, and incompetence. I spoke to Ed Walls at the retreat and at a town hall meeting and after the Board of Commissioners meeting. He is the one person that can help us with budgeting and fiscal responsibility. Explain why you don't want his help. Commissioner Davis, have you crossed over to the dark side?
All right, thank you, Mr. Gooden. Next will be Timothy Von Dale Jefferson.
Madam Chair, prior to me starting, I have information that I would like for the Board to review. If the officer would be so kind to pass this out to the Board, more members greatly appreciate it. That's your copy, sir. My name is Timothy Von Dale Jefferson, 25-year resident of Clayton County, Georgia, and also operated private business, Faith and Sale Economic Development Group. And I had a contract with the Economic Development Office via my conversation with the Chairwoman to bring the private and public sector together. Now, my contract is very simple. This is the ongoing contract. Faith and Sale Economic Development Group are partnered with Clayton County Economic Development Office consulting on restaurants, hotels, any county. Now, there were certain conditions of this contract that I fulfilled. These four potential restaurants are still in place. The hotel is still in place. This is the ongoing contract. But unfortunately, Madam Chair called a former Economic Development Officer and asked her to cancel my contract. As you can see, the invoices are there. But the job is ongoing. Economic development is not done overnight. And I, because I'm a citizen and a stakeholder, I gave the county a discount. I turned in my invoices last week for payment, my last payment on the 90-day contract from May 1st. And then I received my payment. Madam Chair does not have the ability to cancel the contract in the middle of the contract going on. So therefore, I converse with the COO. I converse with the county attorney. And I would like to be paid for services rendered as a professional. And this is one of the minor petty reasons development is going to come to this community. We have to deal with the petty political nonsense as we move forward. Now, we are, I'm talking about tabletop restaurants that are happening right now because of the hard work I do out in the field that I bring to this community. And I've worked with Erica Rocker for seven years, a true professional that we have lost because of petty politics. You understand? So we have to be mindful of our positioning of our authority. When the contract is signed, you have to honor it. So now, I have to come before you guys, and this is diverse. And I would like to have the balance of my contract paid in the morning. And I greatly appreciate it because the contract is ongoing. My contract expires on June 11th. So...
Mr. Jefferson, your time is up. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Chair, Board of Commissioners, citizens of Clayton County. Jean-Pierre Bourget, District 4. As you all know, I've been coming before you all to share information on economic development. First time I came up here, I started by defining what economic development is. It's the process of improving the quality of life of our residents by generating sustainable economic activity. After, I shared insights on a recent development tour and particularly highlighted the importance of interdepartmental coordination and indeed for strategic vision. And tonight, I'd like to begin a brief series of exploring different economic development strategies, starting with a review of a traditional economic development strategy known as smokestack chasing. Smokestack chasing is a practice of attracting large businesses or recruiting large developments by offering large tax incentives and subsidies for them to relocate or expand in our region. In return, we are offered jobs and investment. While this strategy can lead to short-term gains, it comes with trade-offs to include the following. First, tax incentives such as tax abatements, which make it so that these companies don't have to pay taxes for a certain amount of years. What that ultimately means is that tax dollars are not flowing from these deals. And in return, our homeowners are the ones who are picking up the bill during the time the tax abatement exists. Second, big businesses don't have a long-term investment in the community. That means that they locate here, they bring their workers from outside, as well as the jobs that are even allocated for people. And due to the level of education that we have in our community, a lot of those good-paying jobs often are for candidates that don't live in the country. Then lastly, in a rapidly changing economy, when so much attention is spent on big players and we don't invest, make a long-term investment in our local businesses, we're missing the market preparing our local ecosystem of entrepreneurs for the massive economic shifts that are being brought on by artificial intelligence, national economic policy, as well as climate change. Economic resilience is building a network of strong-performing local businesses rather than having a few mega corporations and developments that have no deep investment in the county. In fact, in a study conducted in 2020 by the State and Politics and Policy Quarterly, called, there's an article called "Chasing Despair." The results from that, that study basically found that when, excuse me, when counties practice smokestack chasing rather than increasing prosperity for the communities, that practice is actually increasing inequality. Translation, for poor communities, it's made poor; for rich communities, it's made richer. So as we move forward as a county building smart economic development policies that help our overburdened homeowners and residents, we must adopt futures, future-facing strategies that build rather than steal prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bourget. Next is Mr. David Hamburg. Thank you for changing that out.
Fly me to the... Oh, does it work? David Hamburg, District Number 3. Greetings, everyone. Glad y'all could be here. Ladies and gentlemen, as I spoke in January of this year, and Mr. Bourget did repeat it, we're in a different economic times. We are in a post-COVID economy. Times are changing. Economies are changing. Our trade status is changing. But the one thing that overall hasn't changed is the ability to effectively and efficiently be good stewards of our tax dollars. Now, as we just saw, Governor Kemp signed HB 111, which for the second year in a row has lowered everyone's state taxes that they have to pay. Now, my question is, why would our three state senators, Davenport, Parent, and Kenya Wicks, all vote against this? Why would they not want us to have more of our money in our pockets so that we can pay our bills? So that we can pay things we need, whether it's housing, food, medical? Good question if you ever see any of them besides election year. Ask them, will you? Also, HB 112 passed. That's going to give us all for three years in a row an extra tax return. Now, I say this because we know, starting last year in 2024, our revenues are down. The governor knew it. Even Mayor Andre Dickens knows it. It's been in the papers. He has asked all his department heads to reduce their expenses from anywhere from 5% to 10%. This is not a secret. I ask that all of us look at our expenditures, see what we're actually spending money on, and see ways we can save as a government agency. As I've said, we should run this as a business. That doesn't mean you have to make a profit. But we're getting these things through Governor Kemp because he took less people and ran the state efficiently. That's what happens. We can look at what's been done. It's a fact. You can see the results. That means more money is coming to our pockets. It seems like just yesterday I was here, in July, we were talking about the budget we're about to come out of. But as I say that, when one budget ends, another one begins. So as we look at that, let's do what we should do. Let's hold our department managers responsible for how they spend our tax dollars. And please check out the hot seat interview with Maggie Martinez, which I'm a panelist on. So that's on YouTube on Thursday night. So I appreciate the same was plug. I'm putting it for the show. Everybody, thanks. Have a great evening and bye-bye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hamburg. Next is Mr. Mickey Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board. I would like to give a great world of thanks to Commissioner Tashae Allen for her town hall meeting this past Saturday addressing flooding in the lower part of our county affecting many, many of the residents, not only affecting their property, but affecting their well-being, affecting their animals, and affecting their quality of life. Now, why would Mickey Garber get up here and talk about that district when he lives in District Number 1? Well, I'll tell you why. Whatever happens in any one district of this county affects all of us and, and makes our, i.e., our quality of life either better all over or worse all over. These people are losing their property due to flooding. And the, and the buck keeps getting passed passed from here to commissioners. You've heard Mike Malone and several others come in here and speak about their problem, but nothing's done. You, you have the Water Authority who's in charge of the runoff control of, of water, and nothing's done. What I would suggest is that any new building in and around this area affecting any runoff into those creeks be a moratorium and stopped, not, not tomorrow, not next week, but immediately until the problem is corrected. Have I made myself clear here? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Next is Melissa Scott.
Hello, I am Melissa Scott, and I own two businesses on Upper Riverdale Road, which is Diamond Salon Suites, and my grand opening for Lock'em Up Holistic Care and Skin Products is June the 29th. And I would like for you guys to come out and support my business. Commissioner Davis, I gave you a call, and I'm looking forward to your call back so we can connect and see how we can just be together as a community. Also, that's it. Thank you all.
Ma'am, direct your, direct your comments to the board. Is that it? Thank you.
Okay. Look forward to seeing you all.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing you as well. Thank you. All right. That is a public comment. At this time, we are going to move on to number, Item Seven, our consent agenda. At this time, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Are there any questions at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Um, next, we will move to our regular, um, this is the end of our cons, uh, consent agenda. We'll move to our regular agenda, and we'll look at Items 19 and 22. All right. Mr. Reed?
Item 19. Item 19, which is Resolution Authorizing Clayton County to Partner with the City of Jonesboro to Host an Event, sorry, it's Resolution 2025-90. So Resolution Authorizing Clayton County to Partner with the City of Jonesboro to Host an Event Celebrating Juneteenth to Authorize the Chairwoman to Perform All Acts Necessary to Accomplish the Intent of this Resolution. To Authorize the Chief Financial Officer to Amend the Budget to Reflect an Appropriate Revenue Source and Expenses May Be Required to Provide an Effective Data to this Resolution and For Other Purposes.
Mm-hmm. All right. I need a motion for Resolution 2025-90.
So moved.
All right. I second the motion. All right. Are there any questions at this time?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Reeves?
I had a couple of questions. So I'm, um, I'm trying to get a better understanding, and perhaps this can be directed to the Finance Department, but is this a request? Is this going to be a budget amendment for the $6,500 for this partnership with the City of Jonesboro?
Um, I can answer that. If you approve this resolution, that will include the budget. It's a part of the resolution is authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget.
Okay. I'm trying to remember, did, did we, as a board, did we discuss putting budget amendments on the regular agenda versus the consent agenda?
No. Not at this time. All right.
And then I'm, I'm also just curious, and I understand that it's in the resolution, but from what part of the budget will this amount be coming from?
My understanding, it'll, like, come from the general fund.
The general fund, not the fund balance?
Yes, that's what.
Okay.
Yes.
I ask specifically because I also, I requested a payment for an item that is further in the agenda, and I just want to get a better understanding of the, the difference between the requests for the partnership and the 6,500 for the Juneteenth event versus any additional Board of Commissioners' request for any budget amendments or changes.
I'll say generally, anytime there is a fiscal impact, the resolution will authorize the chair or the chairs designee to perform all acts, sign documents, to, um, to carry out the intent of the resolution. If there is a fiscal impact, it will also include language in that resolution to amend, authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget. That does not preclude separate, uh, budget amendments that come as part of the chief financial, uh, part of Finance Department's request to move money as necessary. But, um, but yes, the resolutions will typically carry both of those directives so that you don't just approve it and then have to come back later and then ask for authority to have the chief, the chair conduct, uh, perform acts, and then later come back and ask the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget. That's all included within so that whatever you all vote on can be executed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? All right. Y'all ready, are you all ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
And, all right, one name, any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is Item 22, Resolution 2025-93.
Resolution 2025-93 is a resolution to authorize Clayton County to establish a legal level of control for the fiscal year 25 budget for each fund of the county to prohibit the expenditure of expenses exceeding the actual funding available. To authorize the Chairwoman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To authorize the Chief Financial Officer or Budget Officer to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution as may be required to provide an effective data to this resolution and for other purposes.
All right. At this time, I need a motion to approve 2025-93.
So moved.
All right. I second the motion. All right. Board members, is there any discussion at this time?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Reeves?
Uh, Attorney Reed, can you explain, in just layman's terms, what this resolution is looking to achieve?
Yes. Typically, the board sets, uh, a level at which departments can move money around before it has to come to the board for a budget amendment. What this does is it lowers that, um, lowers that level so that more items come to the board for your approval if it exceeds what's in that particular line item. I think that's kind of the, the layman's term, but I can defer to Angela. That's not right.
That's correct. The legal level of control currently, line item transfers can be done within a department. You can move money around, for example, Finance, is Finance is a department, but divisions under Finance include the mailroom and internal audit. What this does is if I'm trying to move money from Finance to the mailroom, it would have to come to the governing authority for approval. Below the division level, we can move money within line items, and the Budget Officer approves those transfers. Budget amendments by state law have to come before the board.
So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly. This is to allow not only budget transfers within divisions, but also within departments? Can, can you help me understand it a little bit better?
Currently, a line item transfer is approved by the Budget Officer. A line item transfer is any transfer within line items currently at the department level can go to the Budget Officer. What this does is place the legal level of control at the division so that if I wanted to do a transfer across divisions, I would need the board's approval before I could do that. It places a tighter constraint on the budget control so that those transfers have to come before this board to be approved.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Board members, are there any other questions at this time?
I guess one question.
All right. Commissioner Allen?
Real quick, is there a reason why it's ended at the 2025 budget and not permanently?
So, uh, state law says that it can be done during the fiscal year. So what will happen if the board decides to keep that policy, when the board adopts the 26 policy, it will, within that resolution adopting the budget, will also may, uh, set forth the legal level of control for the 26 budget, and that will just go on year after year.
Thank you.
All right. Are you all ready for the question?
Well, the follow-up question to that, um, I just, I wanted to get a better understanding. So, so even though it is only for, it is only listed for FY 2025, this is something that would be, it would not need to be voted on again for following fiscal years?
So what will happen is every year when the board adopts, uh, the budget, it will have, within that resolution adopting the budget, a line that sets the level of control. So if this is the way that the board would like to continue in roughly a month or so, when you all are adopting the budget for 2026, within that adopting resolution will be a line that says the line level, uh, I mean, the legal level of control for fiscal year 26 will be at the division level. That will be part of that resolution. And then that would be the same in 2027, 28, unless you at some point decide that you want to change the legal level of control during that fiscal year.
All right. Are there any other questions at this time? All right. Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? The, nay, the two right there? Nay and nay?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay, nay. Who was that?
It was just me?
Okay, just you. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure I didn't get, um, Commissioner Allen. All right. All, all opposed again?
Nay.
All right. All right. The ayes have it, and the motion passes. All right. Next is Item Eight. Um, this, at the end of, we're at the end of our consent agenda. We're going to move on. Budget Amendment 2-38. Ms. Merritt? Or Ms. Angela?
Budget Amendment 2-38, in the amount of $1,250, provides funding for the financial advisor to provide budgetary advice for a maximum of five hours.
All right. At this time, I need, I need a motion. Uh, were you asking for a motion for this, for the $1,250? Is that correct? All right. At this time, I need a motion to provide, um, to provide, um, budgetary, um, funding for the financial advisor in the amount of $1,250.
I make a motion that we approve Budget Amendment 2-38.
All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time? All right. All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is Item 24, Board Appointment to the Development Authority. The appointment is to fulfill the unexpired term of Jean Pierre Borje, which began on February 18, 2025, and will expire on March 1st, 2029. Commissioner Reeves, what is your pleasure?
I would like to reappoint Mr. Jean Pierre Borje to the Development Authority.
All right. I second that motion. Any discussion at this time? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is Item 25, Board Appointment, Department of Behavioral Health and Development Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Council. Uh, board members, what is your pleasure?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Ophelia Norum to the Department of Behavioral Health and Development Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Council.
All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time? All right. Are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Number 26, Board Appointment to Family and Children Services. Commissioner Reed, Reeves, what is your pleasure?
I would like to reappoint Ms. Tia Simon, uh, also of the Juvenile Justice Court. Okay, I got your, I got your title all the way wrong, um, but she is the immediate past chair of the DFAX Board, and I'm very happy to reappoint her.
Great. I second that motion. All right. Is there any discussion at this time? All right. Are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Number 27 is Board Appointment to the Housing Authority. Commissioner Davis, what is your pleasure?
Uh, I move to reappoint Mr. Robert Pan.
All right. I second that motion. Is there any discussion at this time?
Yes.
All right. Yes.
Attorney Reed, I just, uh, or I'm not sure if this is for the attorney or if this is for the clerk, but, uh, for the Housing Authority, is this a full board appointment or is this, uh, a district appointment?
I got it. Just let me pull it up real quick.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any, any more discussion at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Well, we're waiting on the answer.
Oh, I thought she answered you.
She said she was going to.
Oh, okay. I thought she said full board.
This is a, this is a five-member board. All are full board appointments, but according to the resolution that was approved in 2022, each district has one appointment for boards that are, um, five-member or less.
So this is a district four appointment?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. All right. And, and any more questions at this time, board members? All right. Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is the Board Appointment for the Library Board of Trustees. Um, that will be, um, from me, Madam Chair. At this time, I move that we appoint, uh, Mr. Isaac Shepherd to the Library Board of Trustees. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time? All right. Are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next is the Board Appointment for the Library Board of Trustees. Commissioner Reeves, what is your pleasure?
I'd like to hold that appointment until the third Tuesday meeting.
Okay. All right. So we will hold that appointment until May?
20th.
20th. All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. Reed, is there any, um, do we have executive session at this time?
Yes, for personnel and litigation.
All right. At this time, I need a motion to go into executive session for personnel and litigation. All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. The board will go into executive session for personnel and litigation issues at this time. Thank you.
We didn't vote on the lease.
Ready? All right.
I got the clerk. She's, she's over there. All right. Now you can go ahead and hit your rock.
All right. I'm like, let's go. All right. I need a motion to return back from.
So moved.
Second.
To reconvene from executive session. All right. All right. Is there any, uh, discussion at this time? Are you ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. We will now re, we will now come back from.
Good evening. I have one item, which is a settlement, um, between Mary Collington and, um, the Board of Commissioners, Sheriff Levon Allen, former Sheriff of Hill, Jesse Kearney, and the Sheriff's Office relating to a traffic incident that occurred on August 30th, 2018, on State Route 85 in Clayton County. Uh, and that is in result of the lawsuit, Mary Collington versus Jesse Kearney, at all, Civil Action 2020 CV 02801, and that is in the amount of $295,000, and authorized the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expenses required under terms of the agreement.
All right. All right. Can I get a, a motion at this time, board members?
So moved.
All right. A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. And please give your reason for.
Pending legal opinion.
All right. Thank you. All right. The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Um, next, we will have a recommendation for our CFO position.
I need to put, uh, well, first of all, good evening again, uh, Board of Commissioners, and good evening to our Clayton County citizens. I can never miss an opportunity to acknowledge them. We do have two things that we want to put on, uh, the record, uh, as far as, um, at the April 16th, 2025 Regular Business Meeting, the Board of Commissioners voted to appoint Patrick E.G.K. as Interim Economic Development Officer. So on behalf of the Office of the COO, Human Resources is requesting a 10% increase of current salary for Director E.G.K., and that comes to a cost of $22,264.
Excuse me. Would you, is it, uh, where did, where did the COO go? Or the attorney? Because we were saying that that money would not come from the general fund.
You're right. You're right. You're right, Commissioner. Thank you. It would, this will not come from the general fund. It will come from the motel, hotel tax. That's the funding source.
All right. At this time, I need a motion to approve the, um, for the recommendation for, uh, Mr. E.G.K.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, for, for clarification, for the record, that this is a temporary increase that is, uh, tied to the interim position until the full-time Economic Development Director position is hired for.
Yes, ma'am. He's appointed interim until such time as the position is filled.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next?
Uh, the next item is in regards to, uh, Mr. Matthew Hutchison, who is serving in the role of Deputy Chief Information Officer. Human Resources is requesting the board's contin, uh, consideration to appoint Mr. Hutchison as the interim, um, Chief Information Officer. Uh, Matthew is currently sitting at a grade 3623 with a salary of $135,039. Uh, the move per civil service rules will be 38, grade 38, step 23, at $149,149, for a cost to the county of $18,249, and this is, uh, requesting, uh, an interim appointment for Mr. Hutchison.
All right. Can I get a motion for?
So moved.
All right. Can I get a second? All right. Is there any discussion at the time, at this time? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. You got something else, Mr. Reed? Mr. Reed?
I'm just.